The April 19th meeting of the Eden Prairie City Council will now come to order. All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you to the guests that have come tonight, and I would like to point out that tonight
is the first meeting of our new city manager, Rick Getchell. I won't put you on the spot by making you say a few words unless you've rehearsed something already.
I've rehearsed nothing.
Okay, well, we're delighted to have you here. Open podium is an opportunity for Eden Prairie residents to address the city prior to the start of city council meetings, which are typically held on the first and third Tuesdays of the month. If you're interested in speaking to the city council, please call City Hall 949-8412 by noon of the meeting date and let us know what your issue is and your name so that we can be prepared. If time permits, after scheduled speakers are finished, I may open the floor to unscheduled speakers. This portion of the meeting is not recorded or televised. If you have any questions on this, please call the city manager's office. Tonight, we have three items under our proclamation presentation section that I think are going to be interesting. The first one is an update on Hennepin County Library from Dylan Young. Dylan, do you want to come up to the podium, please?
Hello. Thank you, Mayor, councilmen, and men and women, and city staff. Wait for the PowerPoint. There it is. Thank you for having me here. Like she said, my name's Dylan Young. I'm a senior librarian at Eden Prairie Library. I've been there for the last four months. I came from the Brooklyn Center Library, and just like to say, I've enjoyed the four months I've had in Eden Prairie. It's been an amazing community to be a part of, and to see, and what you'll see from my presentation tonight, there's a lot of collaboration in Eden Prairie in the library that is actually not seen in a lot of the other libraries in Hennepin County, and it really can be used as the example for the county. So, I really appreciate the opportunities to not only work in this county, but our city, but also give you guys the update. First off, Hennepin County is 41 libraries. We have, throughout the county, we also have an outreach library that serves seniors as well as residents at the prisons and correctional facilities. In 2010, we circulated 17 million items. That's books, CDs, DVDs. It's an increase of 2.6 percent from 2009. And 2009 was one of our biggest years as well, so we're just continuing to grow in our traditional services. Of that 17 million, 1.3 million items circulated out of the Eden Prairie Library. That's the most in Hennepin County. If anyone's seen the large downtown central library, our collection doesn't compare in size to many other libraries, but our customers continue to use our resources more than any other library in the system. Our website has nearly 20 million unique hits. That's an increase of 28 percent. And our computers at the Eden Prairie Library are at capacity 56 percent of the time. So, that means that any given moment, you know, over half the time, our computers are completely used. A lot of people talk about the library as a physical place is dying. Clearly, it isn't. We're constantly being used. Luckily, 56 percent of the time, our computers are at capacity. That means 44 percent of the time, they aren't, and we could serve any customer that walks into a building that needs to use the computer for resumes, homework, things like that. There's 860,000 library cardholders, and last year, Eden Prairie issued 6,311 new cards. That's an increase of 16 percent from 2009, and 2009 was our biggest year before that of new cards being issued. So, clearly, our use has grown. I'm going to show three slides about our website. The reason why I do that is twofold. As you may or may not know, library is more and more, not just a physical place, it's also our electronic, our website, our presence on the web. The first one slide I have is our homepage, hclib.org. And the reason why I include that, it's tough to see it on the screen, but it really sums up what we do as a library. You see, the bottom two logos in the center are programs that we offer at the library, where people can come into the building and attend some theater training from Guthrie or a program about libraries in Minnesota. But the top one is what's called Job Now. It's a database that the library pays for access to, that basically, there's a live job coach on the website that is there to help our customers in our building and outside our building with finding a job. I had a customer, the day after that went live, come up, asked me if I could review his resume, and I told him, "I'm lucky I got the job that I did. I probably wouldn't benefit you to have a resume that looked like mine." But take a look at this resource we have. He went, looked at it, he interacted with an actual live person, they practiced job interview, but he also submitted his resume, and within 24 hours, that website sent it back to him with the corrections to make, tips and tricks and things like that. So, basically, it makes the library a resource, and a skill that library staff might not have, but we have the resources there for people in the building as well as outside. He came back the next day, was very pleased with the resource. So, that's just kind of the example of how the library is definitely evolving into the electronic world. The next resource I show is our digital catalog. If anyone's familiar with the NOOK e-reader, the COBO e-reader, the Sony e-readers, the library actually has a collection of over 10,000 items that customers can check out and read on those devices. Of those 10,000, 8,000 of them are checked out right now, as of today, so it's in high demand. And actually, I looked at the statistics, our digital library is becoming probably about, nearing the top five of our circulating libraries. It's in very high demand, and the customers use it. And this is customers throughout Hennepin County, but Eden Prairie customers use it quite frequently. We have customers come up with, you know, the NOOK, and, "How do I get those books on this device?" We show them how to do it. We offer classes, I'll talk about in a moment, to try to connect our customers with our new technology. The third resource that I have is, I'm sure you guys are aware, that's the iPhone. We have an application for the iPhone, the Android, and the BlackBerry. And basically, what it is, is I always describe it, is in the past, the library was this place. It was a building that, you know, was a part of the community, and it still is, but it was a static place. And if you were at Barnes &amp; Noble and you saw a book that you wanted to read, you'd have to write yourself a note and say, "Oh, I should check the library for that one," or if someone mentioned on NPR, a book that you'd want to read, or on CNN, you'd have to take note to yourself and remember to do it later. Now, with our application, the library is with you wherever you need it. I was just at Barnes &amp; Noble a couple days ago, I have the Android phone, and in the past, I used to take my old cellphone with a camera and take pictures of the covers, and then go back and, you know, check my library to see if I could request them. Now, I pull out the phone and just put the titles in of the books I want, request them from the application, takes about 30 seconds to do, and I have them requested. So, in the past, you had to kind of take note and remember. Now, we're there wherever you are. And this app, it just was released about a month ago, and our customers have come in with positive feedback. Okay, so I kind of talked about the library and the new library, you know, the electronic, the invisible library almost. The good news is, we're still doing the traditional library work. We have these focus areas for 2011, they're same as last year, where we're focusing on early literacy, you know, children, school-aged children, teens, keeping them busy, helping them with their homework, job and small business support, lifelong learning for both seniors and adults, and then the services to 55-plus customers. With those focus areas in mind, here's the upcoming events that we have coming up. And the one thing I really want to point out is every single one of these events, the library is working with a community organization or volunteers from the Eden Prairie community. I always like to say that, you know, the library isn't this building in the community, it is the community. We couldn't do any one of these programs without the help of the school district or the senior center from Eden Prairie, the volunteers that we have that come and put in many hours to help us get books on the shelves and things like that. So, the library in Eden Prairie is really representative of the community. We take feedback from the community members, offer the programs that they would like to see. And you'll see, the first few are ones that our customers have actually told us, "Hey, you know, this would be really helpful," and we responded and offered them. On May 6th, we have Senior Tech Day. I usually actually call it the Technology Petting Zoo, because we've partnered with Best Buy of Eden Prairie to offer basically all those new gadgets that everyone hears about, or the way people have told us is, "My grandkid keeps telling me I need to get an iPad, but I have no idea why." Best Buy is going to bring in the iPad, the Zoom, the Android tablet, as well as iPhones, GPS, and other devices that seniors will be able to literally touch, play with, and Geek Squad members from Best Buy will show them how to do it. They also can bring in their devices and say, "Hey, I have no idea what I'm doing. Can you help me out?" And the Geek Squad members will. The other program we're offering for Senior Awareness Month is the YouTube Viewing Night. It's an event where, I think seniors know what YouTube is, but they don't, they know it's out there, but they don't know exactly, you know, what YouTube, you know, how it's grown as this phenomenon. So, it's not just going to be a night of showing quick videos of what the best things are out there on YouTube. It's also a discussion of what YouTube is culturally, explaining to the community what going viral means and viral videos are. And it's an opportunity also for the seniors of the community to come in and actually create a video and place it on the YouTube website. And that one, we're collaborating with volunteers for the library. Throughout the month of June, we have plenty of African heritage celebrations for adults and kids. We also have, in May, for Children's Book Week, we have steamroller printing coming into our parking lot. They're literally bringing a steamroller out. I have no idea how a steamroller prints, I'm going to go and watch like everyone else, but we have to have security and the whole parking lot roped off so the steamroller can come in. We also offer the computer classes ranging from literally, "How do I use a mouse?" to "How do I make kind of advanced spreadsheets in Excel?" Those are offered by the library as well as through the Eden Prairie Senior Center. We have the Computer Crapper Barrel is what it's called, and it's an opportunity for senior community members to come in and learn on the various computer programs. And I actually had, right before I came here today, a customer come up to me while sitting at the desk. It was a younger woman in her 40s, just, "I have to tell you, thank you so much for having those computer classes. My father can actually send email." And this is one of those things that we get the credit for it. You know, she comes and, "Thank you to us," but we couldn't do it without the Eden Prairie Senior Center. It's one of those things that they, we both recognize the need, they offer the teacher, and we offer the space. And it's a great partnership that's existed at the library for many years, and it's still going strong. Okay, so I've kind of talked a lot about the community connections, but we really break them down. With the city of Eden Prairie, we're connected with the police department, the senior center as I spoke about, immigrant services, the Human Rights and Diversity Commission, as well as the International Festival. These are all opportunities that the library really tries to stay connected and listen as well as share information about what's going on in the community. We also partner with the school district, with Eden Prairie Reads, the big more or less book club, where we provide, through our friends group, over 100 copies of the book. We're a part of the annual partnership breakfast. My Book Day happens at the Eden Prairie Library, where this, it's actually going on as we speak, and this month, we're giving out 700 library cards to first graders that have never had library cards. And then, we're also a part of the EP4Y group. And this is again, all these things, you know, we give out 700 library cards, but without the Noon Rotary, who's a part of the My Book Day, we wouldn't be able to do it. Also, Best Buy, we wouldn't be able to offer that program. I don't know how to use the iPad nearly as well as the Geek Squad does. They're willing to come out and work with us and with the community. Okay, so those are kind of the large groups that we work with. But we also have tons and tons of volunteers that come in and offer their time and services, and without them, we wouldn't be able to get the books on the shelves and offer the programs that the kids and families like in Eden Prairie. Last year, we had over 100 volunteers and 7,000 volunteer hours. These are both long and short term, ranges from the community member who comes in every week to the high school kid that needs to get 15 hours in before the semester's over. They help us out with anything from shelving those books to volunteering during our Pause to Read program, which is where kids can read to a dog. It sounds a bit odd at first, but it's a great event. So, the volunteers really help us with our community events. Lastly, the Friends of the Library, they helped us purchase 12 new bins for items, as well as they purchased 100 books for the EP Reads program. Without them, we wouldn't be able to function. They are advocates in the city, they help build awareness for the library. So, thank you.
Thank you. I'm excited to see that we're still like number one in terms of circulation at Eden Prairie Library. I think we've been hearing that for years. I think even when we were back in a trailer over by Little Red, by the high school, I think we were really high in circulation. But I'm curious, now that we've moved on to eBooks and things like that, are eBook checkouts considered part of your circulation totals?
For the specific building?
Yes.
No. Those go to, the electronic books are more or less considered their own library.
Okay.
That's why they came up with that number, that it's moving up to near top five circulating library. So, it's not narrowed down by location.
Okay, all right. Great program. Does anybody have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
That was very interesting. Thank you. Next, we have Tim Litfin, I'm hoping I pronounced that right, with Minnetoka Continue Ned.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, community members, city council, congratulations, new city manager and city staff and public, thank you for having me. My name is Tim Litfin, I'm the Community Education Director of Minnetoka Public Schools, and I'm here to talk to you about Tour de Tanca, a bike ride coming up in August. We've been through the library successfully, we're ready to get up and stretch and move, and let's go bike riding. And that event comes through Eden Prairie this year. In the past, we have not. We've touched your border on the north side, but now, we're coming through Eden Prairie on the LRT trail from the crosstown. So, we're very excited to be part of Eden Prairie this year, and that's just with one of our legs. It's a multi-distance bike ride. There are several distances that come out of Minnetoka High School on Saturday, August 6th. So, I'll present a little bit of information from last year, and then I'll roll you through into the year of 2011. So, I'll start with that. First slide talks about the number of riders we had last year. Last year was year number five. Tour de Tanca's only been around a few years. Last year was year number five, we had over 2,400 riders already. It's climbed steadily in its first five years, and very pleased about that. And this year, we're setting a cap at 3,000. We want to make sure we're safe, and it is a ride, not a race, and that we work with our law enforcement community as well as our cities, like we're working with you already. I've met with Tom Lowery from your police department already, and he's on board with safety in, as we come through Eden Prairie, and we're doing that with all 24, 25 communities that we go through. Last year, we had members from 12 riders from 12 different states. So, the word has quickly gotten out about Tour de Tanca, and 170 different communities in Minnesota took part last year. So, the ride has definitely come on strong, and we get calls daily. It was treated in the beginning as, "This is going to be a nice event," and now, it's become something that I, as the director, touch daily, and many staff members do as well, and that's just fine, because it's a fun event. You can see how the ridership broke down last year for all the different ride distances that we had. We started a 100-mile ride last year, and even that drew over 300 riders. So, there's popularity for all the different distances, that is for sure. We started a little two-mile smile as well a couple years ago, and that's grown steadily. We ended up hitting the national night out last year, so that's why that participation dipped a little bit. We are fixing that date going forward, so I think that'll see a big jump going forward into this year as well. Last year, we had good success. It's a major event. It's become a major event. Our librarian here talked about number of volunteers that he's dealing with, and he needs them as well. This one-day event, we almost had 400 volunteers in it last year. So, if anyone out there is listening and they want to volunteer, let us know. We have many volunteers that we are needed and that do come forth, and it's fun. It's a fun day for them. They don't need to be there all day, we'll take them for a couple hours, and that works just well. Sheriff and police departments involved as well, fire departments, and of course, the cities participating. This is last year's data, 22, and the counties we were in were three, so we were all over the place last year. This year, coming forward in 2011, I mentioned the 3,000-rider capacity. It's an exciting day, it's a great start, and if, I should back up quickly to the first slide, because it was an overhead of the start. We had a plane fly over, it took off from flying cloud right here in Eden Prairie, and he took several shots of the start. And that doesn't show all the riders there, but if you throw 2,400 riders there, they're all little dots, and it goes on and on. But it's a pretty cool start. We've got the Alarc Wall at the start, and it, there's a lot of energy, music's blasting, and no calls from Eden Prairie, because it's not in Eden Prairie, so you're lucky for that. Last year, we did have a couple of calls that the music is a little loud, well, so we turned it down. Anyway, the cities this year that we're going through are listed there, and of course, Eden Prairie is one of them. We're very proud to run through Eden Prairie. The distances this year are a two-mile, 17, 23, 40, 70, and 100. Everything changes a little bit every year with road construction, with different roads that we want to try, cities that we want to run through, things like that. So, it's a variable distance ride, like I mentioned before, and it changes a little bit every year, which keeps us on our toes, and it keeps us in good flow with the city staff. And I know we've already talked to city staff members about the event, and they're on board as well. Our riders have had very good comments. We survey them and evaluate their comments constantly, and they really talk about several things, but number one, volunteers, scenic ride, and I'm anxious to get on my bike and run the LRT trail from the crosstown through Millu Park and through Bear Path, et cetera, and many of you have already done that, I'm going to do that this spring, but riding near it on a car is beautiful. And I think once the riders see that 23-mile ride, which is the ride that comes through Eden Prairie, they are going to say, "Wow, what a community you have here." And that path is just beautiful, it really is. I can't wait to get on it. One more thing, going backwards, some other comments they talk about, we feed them well at the end. We have plenty of pizza compliments of Gina Marias and ourselves, and the riders come back, and they're hungry, and that's okay. And it's free food at the end. So, there's plenty of good things to do. It does benefit in part the ICA food shelf, and if we're all aware, and I know we are, of our communities and how needy we, our communities have become, that need has grown to over 800 families a month right at the ICA food shelf. And so, we're happy to work with them. We have great volunteers, we have great communities, and we have a great staff. And the date again is Saturday, August 6th, starts and ends at Minnetoka High School, and tourdetanka.org is your website. And if there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer them. And I want to thank you, first of all, for allowing me the time to be on your agenda time.
Any questions for Tim?
Sounds good.
It sounds like fun. Thank you for including your party list.
How long are you planning this year?
Well, I'm very glad it's not the 100-mile run I'd have, or ride I'd have to do if it goes through Eden Prairie. 23 makes it a little more feasible.
It'll be a nice ride. Thank you very much for your time. Good luck with the rest of me.
Next, we have an Arbor Day proclamation, and we have participated in this, I think, every year that I've been on the council, and it comes around this time of year, every year. So, I'll read the proclamation that we have written for today. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products, and whereas trees, whenever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal, and whereas Eden Prairie has been recognized as a Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation and desires to continue its tree-planting ways. Now, therefore, I, Nancy Tira Lukens, Mayor of the City of Eden Prairie, Minnesota, do hereby proclaim May 7th, 2011, as Arbor Day in the City of Eden Prairie, and urge all citizens to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands, and to support our city's urban forestry program. And further, I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the hearts and promote the well-being of present and future generations. So, adopted by the Eden Prairie City Council on April 19th, 2011. So, I think it's kind of apropos, I was walking today and looking around Star Lake Park and seeing how many trees have had branches broken over the course of this winter with the heavy snow and all, it just really seems like there's been a lot of damage to trees. So, planting is important, and as a city, those of us who've had the opportunity to look at aerial photographs of our city that were taken 40, 50, 60 years ago are always struck by the fact that today, Eden Prairie has far more trees than we did back in the 40s and 50s when we were largely a farming community. So, we've come a long way. We have an urban forest here, and we need to keep renewing it, so it's a good reminder that trees are important. Is there a motion for approval of the agenda and other items of business?
So moved.
Second.
Any additions? I have a few things to add under reports of council members. I'd like to also discuss the landfill, League of Minnesota Cities Annual Meeting, the Chinese delegation. So, anything else to add? Hearing none, all in favor of the agenda as amended?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion passes. Is there a motion for approval of the minutes of the council meeting, or council workshop, rather, held on Tuesday, March 15th, 2011?
Move approval?
Is there a second?
Second.
Any corrections to those? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Is there a motion for approval of the minutes for the council meeting held that same date, March 15th?
So moved.
Second.
Any corrections to those? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Consent calendar, do we have a motion for approval?
Move approval?
Second.
Any items to poll for discussion?
I did have one quick one, it's a very quick question that I was asked to make sure of. It doesn't need to be polled, I assume it can be answered very quickly.
Okay, yes, go ahead and ask the question.
It's on the Neal Lake berm, and when I read through it, it does indicate that we are not lowering the lake level, and I did want to confirm that, as there are people that live around it that are concerned.
Your Honor, Ms. Nelson, there's not going to be any change in water elevation on this.
That was the main question, so.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. That brings us to the first of our public hearings, which is Wedding Day Diamonds. Mr. Getchell.
Mayor and council, we do have three public hearings, and the first is Wedding Day Diamonds for a Planned Unit Development Concept Amendment on .69 acres, a Planned Unit Development District Review on .69 acres, and a Zoning District Amendment within the Commercial Regional Service Zoning District on .69 acres at 8320 Crystal View Road. The project is a 3,224-square-foot mezzanine addition to the existing building. The mezzanine level is above the existing parking lot, and based on the total square feet for the building, a total of 33 parking spaces are required, and the plan shows 33 spaces. The building meets the exterior material requirements for 75% face brick, glass, and natural stone. Rooftop mechanical screening and brick trash enclosures are proposed. The 120-day period expires on July 11th, 2011. The Plan Commission voted at their last meeting to recommend approval of the project, that was on March 20th, 2011, and official notice of this public hearing was published in the April 7th, 2011, Eden Prairie News, and was sent to 20 property owners. And we do have represented, I believe we may have a representative of Wedding Day Diamonds here, in case there are any questions for, from the city council.
Okay, thank you. Any questions of Mr. Getchell? Any questions of the Wedding Day Diamond people? Okay, seeing none, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the audience that wants to address the council on the Wedding Day Diamond expansion? Okay?
Seeing none, I would move to close the public hearing and adopt the resolution for Planned Unit Development Concept Amendment on 0.69 acres and approve first reading of the ordinance for Planned Unit Development District Review and Zoning District Amendment within the Commercial Regional Service Zoning District on .69 acres, and direct staff to prepare a development agreement incorporating staff and commission recommendations and council conditions.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of motion?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, where's the Wedding Day Diamond person? Thank you, this is quite an expansion, I'm glad that you're doing well in Eden Prairie. Hearing none, all in favor of motion?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, where's the Wedding Day Diamond person? Thank you, I'm, this is quite an expansion, I'm glad that you're doing well in Eden Prairie. Thank you. Redstone American Grill is the second one. Mr. Getchell?
Thank you, Mayor and council members, Redstone American Grill, a planned unit development concept amendment on 2.97 acres, planned unit development district review on 2.97 acres, and a zoning district amendment within the Commercial Regional Service Zoning District on 2.97 acres, and this is at 8,000 Den Road. This project is a thousand square foot banquet room addition to the existing building, and the project does require two waivers, first a shoreline setback waiver from 200 feet to 110 feet, and secondly, an impervious surface waiver from .734 to .737 or 389 square feet. In 2001, the city granted a shoreline setback waiver to 60 feet from the existing building, and reasons to consider the waiver are that this addition is further from the lake than the existing building, and the proposed setback is consistent with other setbacks for existing buildings adjacent to the lake. In 2001, an impervious surface waiver was granted based on mitigation which was, which was then the construction of a treatment pond, the plan has been revised to increase the pond size to show mitigation for the increased impervious surface. The 120-day review period expires on July 15th, 2011, the planning commission voted 7-0 to approve this project at their March 20th, 2011 meeting, and official notice of the public hearing was in the April 7th, 2011 Eden Prairie News and was sent to 16 property owners.
Okay, thank you, are there any questions for Ms., Mr. Getchell? That's hard to say.
I, I have questions, maybe not for Mr. Getchell, so maybe it would be more for Mr. Deets at some point.
Okay, go ahead, that's fine.
Do you want to now, or?
Yeah.
Just about the ponding that was referred to, we've been experiencing at least the, the thought that down the road here, our ponds are going to be filling up, and we haven't really done an accurate survey, or we haven't needed to yet, as far as the need to dredge them out at some point. Does the expansion of this current pond require that we look at how it's been functioning, and whether it's, needs also some additional dredging, rather than just simply a footprint expansion?
Your Honor, Mr. Case, I think that raises a good question, I don't think we know the answer to that at this point. There is a calculation that's done in two dimension to determine what the requirements are, and I think we're making a very small expansion, like 387 cubic feet of storage, I think, is what this requires, so it's just going to the very end of this. I don't know that our rules would permit them to, or permit us to make them clean out the existing pond, it's possible that we should look at it and perhaps hire their contractor to do it if it's something that we needed to do, but we are collecting stormwater fees from that site, and that would be our responsibility, I believe, as opposed to, you know, I guess I shouldn't say that, I don't know if there's any public water in that or not, that's, but it's, it's an interesting question that we'll address at our staff level.
Well, I wonder if it's not an opportune time to at least get some anecdotal feedback on maybe all the rest of the ponding, we, we are, I know we're in the process over the next couple of years of collecting that kind of data, and see how they've been functioning, but anyway, I was just curious whether that would be a, a good time to be doing that.
It's a good point, and we'll look into that.
This might also be for you, Mr. Deets, I know for people that go to Redstone, it's a very busy place, we're adding a thousand square feet, how, could you address the whole parking issue and how that's impacted?
I think I'm going to duck and let Ms. Jeremiah do that.
Okay.
They do lose five parking spaces with this addition, however, they still exceed our minimum parking requirements, and we haven't been aware of any problems with parking in fire lanes, or parking in drive aisles, or any complaints from parking off-site, so they meet our ordinance, we're not aware of any issues, and although I'm sure they would love to have more parking, does appear to be adequate.
Okay, all right, thank you. Are there any questions of the proponent? Okay, this is a public hearing, is there anyone from the audience that wants to address the council on the Redstone expansion? No? Okay.
Seeing none, I would move to close the public hearing, and adopt the resolution for planned unit development concept amendment on 2.97 acres, and approve the first reading of the ordinance for planned unit development district review and zoning district amendment within the Commercial Regional Service Zoning District on 2.97 acres, and direct staff to prepare a development agreement incorporating staff and commission recommendations and council conditions, and approve and authorize issuance of a grading permit for Redstone American Grill project subject to release by the city engineer upon determination that the final contract documents conform to plans stamped dated April 14th, 2011, as approved by the city council, and approve and authorize issuance of a footing and foundation permit for the Redstone American Grill project, subject to release by the chief building official, that the building permit conforms to plans stamped dated April 14th, 2011, as approved by the city council.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Finally, we have the first reading of an ordinance amending city code, chapter 11, relating to definitions for cast stone, cultured stone, architectural precast, and precast concrete panels. Mr. Getchell?
Mayor and council, what this amendment does is adds cast stone, cultured stone, architectural precast, and precast concrete panel to the list of exterior materials in our 75% category in commercial office, town center, high density, and public zoning districts. In the advantages, there are several advantages, this material does look like real stone, there are a variety of different colors, textures, and shapes that are available, it provides flexibility for architects, there's a cost savings involved to the developer and owner that would use these materials, and finally, these materials are environmentally friendly. So tonight, we would have a public hearing for the first reading of this ordinance amendment.
Okay, thank you, any questions for Mr. Getchell?
I do have one question, in terms of, in terms of longevity of the products, do we feel that we have a good track record and good knowledge of the products that, that they will hold up equally as well as some of the products that they're being substituted for?
Councilmember Aho, it's my understanding that these products do have longevity in some, in some ways, as much or more than the original products that you'll see, I don't know, Ms. Jeremiah concurs?
Yes, that's correct, we're actually one of the last cities to kind of come around on this because we were so adamant in making sure that they do have a good track record, and they do have a very good track record, and they've been used elsewhere for many years, and have held up very well, and still continue to maintain their aesthetic value as well. So we're very pleased to, to bring this forward now, and I think the development community will be even more pleased.
Great, thank you.
Thanks. This is a public hearing, is there anyone that wants to address the council on this change to the city code? Okay, is there a motion?
I'll move to close the public hearing, and approve first reading of the ordinance to amend city code section, chapter 11, section 11.02, by the addition of the definitions for cast stone, cultured stone, architectural precast, and precast concrete panel, amending section 11.03 subdivision 3K relating to the architectural standards, and adopting by reference city code chapter 1 and section 11.99, in which among other things contain penalty provisions.
Second.
Hearing discussion? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
The motion passes. Payment of claims, is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Any items to question? Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Aho?
Aye.
Councilmember Case?
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Terrell-Lukens?
Aye. Thank you. Next report of council members, the first item is an announcement that we received a $1,000 donation from Reader's Digest, do you want to read this, Rick?
No, you're doing well.
Okay. Reader's Digest is doing an event called We Hear You, America, and they made a stop at City Center on April 13th, and presented us with a $1,000 stimulus check, looks like this. They came in a 35-foot RV, which you can win if you go on their website and vote for Eden Prairie for further awards, but this was part of a 100-city tour that their group has been undergoing, showcasing the best in America, and we won this award of $1,000, and we're supposed to use it for something to promote and financially stimulate our community, so we'll be thinking about some ideas, and take good care of that money, and we appreciate it. The second thing I wanted to bring up is the whole landfill issue, and at our last council workshop, we had a presentation from the MPCA about possible solutions for dealing with problems at both our landfill, Flying Cloud landfill, which is closed, and the Hopkins landfill, and one of the proposals, as you remember, and I'm sure you've heard many comments from residents, was that they would open up our landfill for repairs, which needs to be done and will be done regardless, but one of the proposals included bringing Hopkins garbage from their dump over to our landfill. And I, they did not ask us at the time for a formal vote on whether or not we would go along with that proposal, but I know that all of us have received a lot of emails, there's been something in paper, phone calls, and people are concerned about this because the whole landfill issue was a very hot topic in the early nineties, and there's still people here that are very passionate about not reopening that landfill. They do want it repaired, so that environmentally it's safe, but they don't feel like we should allow landfill to come from Hopkins to our landfill. So my thought is, I would love to ask the council to take a vote on whether or not we would entertain that idea of accepting Hopkins garbage. I guess the way I would like it worded is, that we do not agree to the concept of accepting Hopkins garbage, because I would just like to get this put to rest, I don't want the public getting riled up, because I think it was pretty obvious in the presentation that this was not something that we were wild about.
And it does require a, it does require a four-fifths vote of the council to approve that.
Right, right. Other comments?
No, I would make a motion.
Okay, great.
That we go on record, that we will not accept, that we would not, help me here, Mr. Attorney, that we would vote, not vote to accept the landfill contents from Hopkins landfill.
That's perfectly fine.
Okay, all right, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
It, it just doesn't look like there's an awful lot of garbage to move, and there's an awful lot of unknown quantities in a older landfill, and it, it doesn't seem to be all that logical thing to do.
Right, I agree. All right, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes unanimously, that's great.
Your Honor?
Yes.
Could I underscore one thing, you mentioned it, and I think the people of Eden Prairie need to hear it again and again and again, because they possibly, depending on funding, which does not look good for this year nor the next year, but they possibly will at some point see it opened up in the future and wonder, what is that about? And number one, it's not a bad thing to have it opened up and fixed, because it currently is gathering surface water, which has to be corrected, and it may be leaching into subterranean waters, which we would not want, so there, there's a value in fixing it, and the second thing is that MPCA has authority to do that, that they can and likely, if they ever get the funding, will do that. So that, that being said, if somewhere down the way they see that, it is not what we, we, we did not agree to take any additional landfill contents, it's just simply maintenance and mitigating and correcting a problem that exists.
Thank you for clarifying that, Councilmember Case.
You said, I just wanted to understand.
Yeah, I'm glad you did. Councilmember Nelson?
He also needs to add that they, also the gas extraction system is not currently operational, they need to get that operational so that it doesn't collect underground or whatever. So there are some things that there, keep learning about how you safely close these large landfills, and ours isn't up to snuff quite yet, and so chances are this will be happening, and my understanding from what we heard was they'll do it in sections to try to keep the odor down and such, but it's not something that, you know, means we're getting extra, you know, it shouldn't be too obnoxious for the neighbors or anything like that, and they have reason, if you're a neighbor, to want this being done.
Thank you. Councilmember Aho?
And, and you kind of alluded to it, Councilmember Case, but I just want to further clarify that the MPCA does have jurisdictional authority, and they can do this without really the permission of, of Eden Prairie, and so when this takes place, when and if, we don't know when, we, we assume that it will take place, we've not been given any schedules or any kind of dates as to when the project would be undertaken, but it will be undertaken at some point in the future, and we really don't have much control over when and if it is done.
And just to be clear, what is, what would be being done, would be fixing the current contents that are in there, that they would need our vote, which we just voted tonight to say, in essence, we would say no, they would need our vote to expand it.
Correct.
But they do have jurisdiction to fix it without our approval, correct?
Right, and, and just to be clear on what the fix is, and, and that was alluded to as well, the fix would involve taking, there's a layer of dirt on top of a liner and a barrier over the top of the garbage, and the issue with the landfill at this time is that the, there's not enough dome or not enough scope or, or run on that cover to allow the water to drain off of it, and so the water does pool up on top of the cover, which is not a good thing, not a desirable thing, so the reason that it would be mitigated or repaired would be to pile, to re-scope the, the surface of the, of the trash and put the, put a new cover over the top, so that the water doesn't pool on top of it.
Mr. Getchell, did you want to say something?
Yeah, Mayor and council, I was going to add that I think it's important to recognize again that this, this was a state proposal, the two communities did not bring forward the proposal, and a, a vote's not necessary, but is a good indication of where the council stands, but I also think the history of the MPCA, if they're going to do the work that they need to do, that Councilmember Aho mentioned, they do have a, a public process, and involving the neighbors and the residents in the area, before they do that work, and as was said, we have no idea when that is, and so much depends, as Councilmember Case said, on future bonding. So there's just kind of a, a what-if, built on a what-if, built on a what-if, even now as we move forward without the Hopkins option, but I do know that the, the Pollution Control Agency will attempt to involve as many affected residents as possible when that time comes.
All right, thank you. Mr. Russell?
I would just historically point out, 21 years ago, when Mr. Julie and I negotiated the resolution of this, and insisted upon a restrictive covenant that the landfill not ever accept garbage again without four-fifths vote of the council, I never dreamed I'd be sitting here watching that item come to your attention, but, but for the restrictive covenant, they would not have had to ask for your permission to do what they asked to do.
Well, thank you for getting that in the documents, that was very far sighted.
Mr. Julie was very instrumental in that.
Okay, great, thank you. The third thing I wanted to talk about is, when we talked about what our goals were in January for, for the year, one of the things I talked about, because it came up when I was campaigning, was my desire to get the community involved in a conversation about what kind of services we're going to be providing as a city, the tax situation, things like that, and there was an opportunity to apply to the League of Minnesota Cities to participate in their community conversations program, where they will be working with cities to facilitate these types of conversations, and we applied, Joyce Lorenz did the application, and we fortunately were, were one of the cities that was approved, I think they approved nine or 10 cities out of all the applicants, and we're the only twin cities community other than the city of St. Paul that was selected for this. So we will be working with them at some point in the future, it's looking now like it might be midsummer, late summer, before they are ready to get going on these community conversations, but I think it will be real productive, plus our thoughts are added to the pool of all these other cities that are going through the same conversation, so I think it will be an interesting exercise. The thing that I wanted to bring up tonight was the fact that as part of getting selected for that program, they are giving us a free registration for the League of Minnesota's annual meeting in June, so if any of you are interested in attending, we do have a free registration for that that is provided, so maybe talk to Lorene, and she can make sure that you get registered with a, a free registration. I think it's in Rochester, like June 18th, 19th, someplace around that timeframe.
Mayor, fif, you are correct, Rochester, June 15th to the 17th.
15th to 17th, okay, thank you. Okay, and then the final thing is, I wanted to mention the fact that we had a visit yesterday from a delegation of officials from the city of Lodi, China, and Lodi, China, and we've had an ongoing relationship with Lodi, the school district, the Chamber of Commerce, and the city for about, well, since about 2005, 2006. And so we had a delegation here yesterday. They met with the school district. They met with some businesses, and we had a reception for them here in the garden room yesterday, late afternoon, and it was very nice. We exchanged gifts, which is kind of a traditional thing to do with Chinese visitors. We received two nice gifts from them, which we will have in the council office, or we'll figure out someplace to put them that's appropriate. Maybe something like that would be appropriate in the historical museum. You know, it's a big event when you have visitors from China come. But it was a very nice event, and I'd like to thank all the staff that helped to put that all together and all the council that was able to attend. So thank you. The next item on the agenda is Mr. Russell, pardon me, Mr. Getchell.
Mayor and Council, I do have one item. It's an update. It's an information item, a piece of really positive news again. Last week, I believe it was on Wednesday, the city received the Earl Wilford Award, and the Earl Wilford Award is given out by the local Labor Management Council, and it's given to a community participating in labor management practices for cooperation and partnership. In this case, the city of Eden Prairie and the work that is done with the local 49er group and the Public Works and Parks Maintenance Department were awarded the Earl Wilford Award, and a lot of that had to do with the fact of, to our number-one ranking. We had recently received the number-one ranking, and a large part of that was due to the work of Parks and Public Works, and we're very proud to receive that award. And again, it shows the excellent cooperation the city has between labor and the management, and the conversations that we continue to have, difficult times or not, the partnerships and discussing better ways to deliver city services, and having an excellent relationship plays a huge role in what led to the number-one ranking and what led to the Earl Wilford Award. So we're very proud to have received that, and I just wanted to report on that this evening.
Good. Thank you, and congratulations to staff. Next report from the Community Development Director, Ms. Jeremiah.
Your Honor, council members, for the last 20 years, we have been operating our city rehab loan program with a 5% simple interest rate, and there's a longer history than that, but that has been the last 20 years. And that accrues for a period of 10 years. However, we are recommending eliminating that interest since it's no longer competitive and it's been stifling homeowners' interests in the program. And this is a very important program to make sure that our housing stock remains well-maintained and vital into the future, and of course, this is for lower-income homeowners. And with the interest, sometimes the value of the repairs obviously depreciate over time. Often, it's roofing and that type of thing, while the interest requires the higher repayment. So this becomes very difficult for those low-income homeowners when it comes time to repay those loans. And this program is funded through our federal Community Development Block grant payments, and we have 72 rehab loans currently open. Of those 15, no longer accrue interest. The remaining 57 we're proposing would cease accruing interest from this day forward if you do approve this change. And we would notify those existing loan holders and ask them to sign a loan modification agreement, which is included in your packet, and the repayment agreement, again, would modify to eliminate the interest just from this day going forward. It wouldn't affect the past. And any future loans that were opened would also be subject to no interest. And as you can see, that there's a comparison of other cities. Most charge less or no interest. Some other cities even forgive the loans. We do not forgive them. This change would also make the rehab loan program more consistent with our new first-time homebuyers program, which you just approved at the last meeting, I believe, and that does not include interest. And I also want to point out that Jean Karshnia, our rehab loan specialist, who's also funded through federal CDBG monies as a part-time staff person, is here this evening. If you do have any additional questions, Jean has done a fabulous job over the last several years of administering this program and working with the federal government on all of the requirements that go along with it. So she's very knowledgeable in this area, and I wanted to make sure that you are aware of her capable presence. So if you have any questions, I will probably turn them over to Jean.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for staff? Thank you. Sounds like a reasonable change, given the loan climate and what other cities are doing. Thank you. Is there a motion?
I would move that we approve the modification of the housing rehab loan repayment agreement, which eliminates the 5% interest rate.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Next, we need to adjourn to closed session. Mr. Russell?
Yes, the purpose of the closed session is to discuss the potential litigation with Bear Path Limited Partnership, Bear Path Golf and Country Limited Partnership. Council will recall that we had started litigation last year. We dismissed it to enter into settlement discussions with them without the threat of the pending lawsuit hanging over everyone's head, and we need to report back to the council and discuss litigation strategy from going forward.
Thank you. Okay, we'll adjourn.
We would not adjourn. We would not come, no action's going to be requested of the council, formal action, so we would adjourn from closed session.
From closed session, okay. Thank you. All right, Mr. Getchell, did you have anything to add?
Mayor, I do not.
Okay, thank you.